To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get our meeting started here. And welcome to all of our attendees here tonight. We could start off with administrative report on agenda posting and notification of meeting to the media.
Yes, the agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes, and the town of Monaco. And the media notified was Phyllis County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. And amendments and approval of agenda? Any amendments at all? Good. All right, so I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Terry, second by Stacy. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carried four to zero. Uh, next, we have approval of minutes of the May 19th, 2021 regular meeting, and the May 26th, 2021 special meeting. Entertain motions to approve both or singular.
I'll make a motion to approve both the regular voting and the special voting.
Second.
All right. And a motion by Josh, second by Terry. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four to zero. Uh, next, we have approval of the vouchers slash check register for the period of May 14th, 2021 through June 10th, 2021.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the checks dated 5/14/21 through 6/10/21 for accounts payable. ACH checks number 2021-00162 through 2021-00180. Regular checks number 124842 through 124987. And manual checks number 5171 through 5186 in the amount of $794,505.92. And the ACH payroll checks number 9000-35307 through 9000-35575. And regular payroll checks number 59113 through 59136 in the amount of $505,226.87. For a total amount of $1,299,732.79.
Second.
Okay. So Stacy seconded Terry's motion. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four to zero. Uh, next, we have hearing comments from visitors on agenda items. Anybody handled it? Like to speak with us today?
Um, which item?
Yes.
Oh, last time you didn't ask that. Okay. Um, I guess it's gonna, I'm guessing it would fall under D.
Under D. Okay.
Okay. Um, and one comment about the status of the School Forest Advisory Committee. Um, according to district policy, you follow Robert's Rules of Order. Um, in August of 2019, you created the, um, School Forest Advisory Committee with a formal process and a vote to create it, and, uh, discussed that they needed a charter. In November, they brought their charter to you, which was to create a comprehensive plan, uh, and presented to the board. In March of 2021, um, they came and gave a status report, and, um, you indicated that they had not submitted a comprehensive plan, and that the board members felt that there was a need for additional information. All this is from minutes of meetings. Um, and then in April of '21, uh, members of the School Forest Advisory Committee were, uh, advised and thanked, um, that the committee had been disbanded, discontinued, according to the minutes, with thanks. Um, according to Robert's Rules of Order, um, you need to officially disband that committee because you officially created it. Um, and, and then, um, I would hope that in disbanding it, you would, uh, give some indication of how you are thinking of moving forward with that process. And also, um, assuming the, um, uh, we can assume that you will be following district policy and open meeting law in the way that you, uh, hope move forward. That's my comment.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Uh, going on to new business. July meeting dates. Terry, who can handle this?
July 21st would be our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Um, we should plan on that, six o'clock here in the boardroom. Um, and then I'm going to propose for you a special board meeting for filling the vacancy on the board. Um, July 14th would fit well, or if you would so choose, we could do it within the regular board meeting on 7/21. However, the agenda is already going to be lengthy, and I suspect this would add quite a bit more time to it.
Okay. All right, so basically the Wednesday prior to our special, or to our regular meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Um, these board members, you check your calendars? Is that within your end, Terry?
Yes, I have no problem.
Okay, Stacy and Josh. Someone could make a motion to set that meeting date for a special meeting?
I'll make a motion for July 14th special meeting at six o'clock. Second. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, motion by Stacy, second by Josh. I guess we already asked if everybody was good at that, but, uh, we'll go right to the vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. All right, so we have the date for that. And that covers all the July meeting dates?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, now we got another date here.
Yes.
Setting date for the board slash administrative slash staff retreat.
In talking with my administrative team, they have suggested the week of August 9th. They are all back here. Um, or it could again be on the 16th, which is our regular board meeting. But that is a lengthier free meeting. Last year, as you know, it was attached to the Boojay Return Plan. Um, this year, it's going to be shifting, I would suspect, back onto the instructional, um, plans and bringing together some of the new ideas. I am, for full disclosure, already asking administration to be looking at the previous plan and seeing what needs to be talked about, thought about, revamped. So they're bringing more preconceived ideas to you rather than just a group gathering and figuring it out on the spot. I think it's extremely necessary with the shift in personnel.
Okay. All right, so the week of the 9th or the 16th?
Yes.
I vote the 9th.
Week of the 9th is better? Or are you specifically saying the 9th?
No, the week of the 9th is better.
Okay. Um, and timeframe, normally we start at noonish, or are we looking to start in the morning?
We had originally, when we thought about April, talked about morning, but I think that's up for discussion right now. It's, uh, based on your work schedules, 'cause I'll be here.
What day of the week is the 9th?
Well, that would be a Monday. It could be any day during that week.
Well, no, but I mean, that's fine. I'm just wondering what day it is.
Does anybody have any, um, preferences? Starting at noon or starting in the morning?
Starting later in the day would work better for myself. Later in the week would be better also. Okay.
How long would the meeting, how many hours are we looking at? Do we just?
Well, in the past, what was it made of this?
It's usually three to four.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had lunch, and so that starts at about 11:30, and then we'd work through till the end of the day.
Sure.
Josh, how does that work for your work schedule?
What's that?
Oh, an 11:30 start?
That, I can make that work.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, you stated later in the week. So like a Thursday, is that?
Thursday, Friday would be best.
Thursday doesn't work for me.
Is it just not?
Is Friday a good day or not a good day for you?
It's a good day for me.
Yes.
I don't have a three-day weekend.
Well, you're working. Friday the 13th? Yes.
Friday the 13th, that would, we should do it for sure then.
Right.
How does, does the 11th work for anybody? That's a Wednesday. Is that? So I may have trouble on the 13th.
11th works for me too.
So you're, it's okay, and you're in?
Wednesday is gonna be really hard for me.
Okay, all right.
That week just isn't best for me, period. It's a short week, kind of, I end.
Okay. You could make the 13th work.
You know, actually.
Or is it?
Yeah, 13th I can, 13th I can do. Um, you know, I can probably do, I don't know how Monday works for everybody. I can do Monday afternoon.
On the 9th?
On the 9th. See, that probably doesn't help you do it.
No, that's okay. That's, that's, Monday's gonna be a lighter day for me sometimes, so.
Okay. Monday's good. I can do Monday.
Okay.
So it's Monday the 9th then?
August 9th at 11:30.
Okay, so you could make that motion?
I'll make a motion to set the date for the board slash administrative staff retreat for Monday, August 9th at 11:30.
I'll second that.
The meeting actually started noon?
Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right, and all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four to zero. Onto the Highway 8 parcel update.
Nope, we must see.
Did I skip one?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I did.
It was a big one.
It was a big one.
Uh, reviewing the application process for vacant Board of Education seat.
Okay.
All right.
So we have the application process that we need to talk through tonight because we do have the open seat by Carrie Volk. Um, we should really try to have this seat filled within 60 days of, of her, um, notification, which was May 29th. Uh, it would really behoove us to try to get this done and still give proper notification to our public. Um, things that I was, uh, put in your packet, thanks to Carrie's help, was I did some suggested dates for the newspaper. I was thinking that if we had it posted and out there immediately after this meeting, so it would be in the newspaper next week, and then the three following, or three total. So it's going to be three publications. That's a total of like 16 days. We should have at least 14. And then it would be on the website. It would be out there for everybody. Um, that was step one. That way, we could do the special meeting on the 14th, which we have already talked about. That's the first part. Questions about that, or does that make sense? We have a very vague policy for filling vacancies. And, um, as now we begin starting working on our policy work, I would suggest that's in our first ten that we kind of accomplish. And what we're doing here, I would say, put in the back of your mind is that procedurally where we would want to go and get it into policy. We're, we're okay because it's so vague, but it's really going to be nice to have some protocol in place. Then what we did, uh, quite a bit of research, I believe Mike did research as well, but Carrie and I did some checking what other districts have done. And our ideas came from board doc recommendations and districts that are using board docs. Um, and one of the things that seemed to be clear was to have a, a form, like an application of interest form, because you're kind of killing two birds with one stone. As they say, that way, there's a guideline, and there's some structure to it. And you're also then doing a formal declaration of interest and application. And I believe that's important to have on record. Uh, Mike and I talked a little bit preliminarily when we were looking at the agenda, and definitely want to get your feedback, especially Stacy and Josh, where you were the most recent going through the process. Within your packet, I showed, shared with you some of the questions that would maybe help guide the letter. I think people put a lot of effort into their letters and tried to cover a really broad spectrum of why they were interested, and maybe this would help guide it a little bit more. So first of all, we want to know if you're interested in this, what you like about it or don't like about it. And then from there, we can go into what the actual interview process could look like.
Well, you went through it not too long ago. And, uh, so I don't know if there's anything that stood out that you thought would be an improvement over the process we did? And, uh, I guess the outline that Terry's put forth here, I guess, what are your thoughts on that? Terry will connect with you then after.
I like the outline. I like the direction. I remember thinking to myself, where in the heck do I start? When, when we did it, um, the direction that this guides is, you know, that which, you know, really makes you sit down and think, do I want to be on this board? You know, is this, is this what I want to do? So I, I'm very much in favor of what's here.
Okay.
I agree, and, you know, I think it's gonna give, a lot of good information and, like, questions, and then, yes, I totally agree with what it looks like. Sure, yep.
Okay, good. Terry?
Oh, I was just going to the next step. I was thinking of, uh, uh, if we got a lot of applicants, do we interview all the people? Or do we have, you, we could use this for our first cut down to, well, say five people or something like that? Sort of like we did for District Administrator.
And, and last time, we, we interviewed everyone.
Yeah, we interviewed everyone.
Yep. Yeah, so, I think we, I think we had five.
We had five though, so it was, that was sort of manageable. I think if you get, you get six or seven or 10 or something like that, then you gotta do some pre-selection.
Yeah.
And this form gives you some information, not enough. And I think I could use it for pre-selection.
Okay, and so if everybody's comfortable with, um, this as the application, um, and then, then the process at the meeting, what we did last time was we had an interview process where three questions, I believe, were taken at random out of a hat from, um, board members each came forward with a question, and those questions are put in a hat, and they're pulled out randomly. And that was the question that was, uh, asked to each of the individual applicants. And, uh, so, um, what did you think of that part of the process?
The only thing that I would suggest, 'cause it is to ask the other applicants, is only have one speak at a time, and the other, whoever's not speaking, be out of the room. We all said basically the same thing. And I don't know if it was driven by having heard it or if it was driven by, you know, really, really, we're all thinking the same thing, which I'm sure is a little bit of both.
And it was very hard. I got, I got last every time. And it was really hard sitting and thinking, and I'm like, oh, what am I gonna say? And so that was hard.
So if you don't know what the previous person had said, you know, it's, it's much more, I want to change, it's not the word, but it's, it's not already been said, or, and you don't know if it's already been said. So you don't feel uncomfortable about saying it again.
Okay.
You know, you can leave the, you know, whoever, whoever else might be at the meeting that's not applying, that just is there for the meeting. They can sit and listen, but I would say the other.
Well, one concern, and I would really think we need to follow up with legal because in the reading I've done, being that it's an open session meeting, I don't know that we can ask anyone to leave open session.
Sure.
Even if they're a candidate.
A little bit of this was modeled to after, like, the candidates forum, where your question is asked and all three people answer. So, you know, I get what you're saying. Yeah, I, I wasn't even thinking from a legal, from a whole other meeting standpoint, so.
I do think it would be really important to have each of the candidates make a statement, like a prepared statement, or, or it can be, you know, off the cuff. I would, I would want paper. But I think that's probably, um, going to help you beyond what is on their information that they shared with you.
Um, do we need to ask three questions? If we're getting all this information in front, um, can we bring it down to one or two questions with the statement?
Well, it can be a generic question too. I mean, why do you want to be on the school board? I mean, that doesn't limit anybody or drive anybody in any direction. And yet, it's useful to see the articulation in what the, what the thought process is for the person. So.
Yeah. Some of those questions on here bring us close to that, and maybe, you know, I like what we did last time where, you know, the board members brought questions, and we put them in a hat. Nobody knew what was gonna be asked, so nobody could really prepare for it. So I, I think there was some merit to that. And, uh, so, maybe we just go with two questions.
Yeah, there, there's actually merit for only having one because then you can never be accused of, of, people articu, well, people hearing it and then copying it. Different. Somebody gets an easy question versus a hard question. And there are easy questions, and there are hard questions. And, uh, just like there's generic and specific. And I, I would guess you'd want to be as generic as you can so that if the person wants to get specific, they can, but you're not asking them, forcing them to do that.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm supporting your idea and sort of maybe trimming it down a little bit, or.
You're saying down to one question?
Well, if, if everybody gets the same question, then, then you can compare the answers. The trouble with that is if the other people are gonna be sitting in the room, then that steals their thunder or, or takes away, you know, part of what they can talk about too. And that's, I don't see fairness in that at all. The only fairness I see in that is if they were out of the room. And I don't, I don't know that that would be such a big problem. I mean, that's, you don't, you don't want somebody to copy somebody else.
Yeah, you try to differentiate yourself. I mean, that's the, not totally uncommon in a political debater or whatever. It's, you know, everybody gets the same question. And, uh, one question, I think, uh, to, in my mind, is, is maybe not enough, you know, if it's something, I, I'm thinking we should do two questions?
Yeah, if you have five people and you ask one question, that might not narrow anything down for you, or it might only get you down to three people instead of one.
So I guess, um, I, I think it would probably, if we're gonna make this some kind of, uh, I guess, framework for potential policy, maybe we should put this into action and just, um, come to an agreement on what we're gonna do. So I guess first of all, let's take it in pieces here as far as the initial, uh, applicants' questions and such. Is everybody good with that? So that could be part of the motion. We go with the question that we are asking the applicants to start with. And then at the board meeting itself, is an open session. Um, and then again, just to, um, remind everybody, you probably do remember this, none of the voting can be done in secret ballot. We all have to vote in order. So, and, uh, so, um, so we ask the applicants to fill these out, and then we do the interview questions to them. And, uh, we're looking at two questions. And then we go to a vote. Is it?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So if somebody could make a motion on that, and we'll move forward with that process.
I'm not so sure what to motion.
Um, just to follow the procedure as stated, you know, as far as the questions that we've got in front of us for the applicants. And then we'll come together at the board meeting on the special meeting, and we'll ask two questions. Each one of us can come up with a question. We'll put it in the hat, and, uh, and the two questions we pull out of that.
Is this something that we can, we can motion on? The item that, the item as posted says review application process, or who making it for it?
Yeah.
Just part of a review, then.
Okay. So we just,
I don't know, I just, I'm just.
Do you just want to agree on it? Is everybody in agreement with it? I just want to make sure we're going into this with
all the same.
Everybody's on the same page?
Yep.
Yeah, well, we could, we could have a motion to approve the application process for the vacant Board of Education seat as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Does that do it? Oh, I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay.
There we go. Okay, all right. Uh, any other questions to this process?
What was that that you were saying? Can you say again about the secret ballot? You can't do a secret ballot for this during the voting, during voting for this?
Yeah, just during, like, yeah.
You could write it on paper, but it has to be presented in beautiful.
Yeah, I mean, your name has to be.
Your name would have to be on it.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, can't do a secret ballot.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you gonna talk about your other thing that you were talking about?
No, I guess, I just want to make sure that you didn't have any other question before we called it over. Okay, all right. All of the favors signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. All right, thank you for your input on that. We have a process, and, uh, you can get that posted for us. That would be great.
We'll get it then.
And we'll get the notification out there. Um, and, uh, get some applicants in, and then we'll start the review process then. And then as soon as we get those, they gotta apply by the 9th. Um, if we can just pick those up from Terry.
Yep, we'll have packets ready for you.
And then we can review them ahead of time. So, all right. Okay, now moving forward to Highway 8 parcel update. Terry?
I have a very brief report. Um, Steve LaValle, who is the Wetlands delineator, had to reschedule to June 9th. He did come on June 9th. Um, I met him out there. He walked the property. He identified vegetation. He dug nine holes and checked all the various areas. He is doing a, a completely documented written report with, for us with maps and his findings. I have not yet received them. He told me I would most likely not receive them for this meeting, but I can count on them for the next meeting. And, um, that's what I wanted to share at the next meeting with this report and the previous, um, information we had gotten from our legal counsel and some of the other things that we have talked in the past. I will put together a summary for you so you kind of have it all in a nutshell where we are because we're at the point then where we're going to have to make some board decisions as to next steps.
All right.
Oh, she did, okay.
Okay, very good, thank you for that. And let's see here, now we have the monthly review of the Blue Jay Return Plan.
Okay, and I did this a little differently, because I, I just wanted to share with you where our data ended up. This is not new, or something that people haven't seen. It's been on our COVID dashboard that Jen has done a nice job. I was thinking about the process as it evolved, and how in the beginning, working with the county health departments, and with Jen, and parent letters, and posting and stuff, you know, we were almost over bombarding people with every piece of information that came out. And then as we learned more, and were given better guidance, and, and learned along the way, we found that dashboard really helped. And, you know, it, it, to us, it was news, but I guess the rest of the world was experiencing it, too. I did put together the data, because I wanted you to see that for the period of time that we were tracking, which was from September through the end of May, we had a total of thirty confirmed cases that were somehow connected to our school district. And in those thirty cases, twenty of the cases were students, and ten of them were staff. And please don't be misled in thinking that it was contracted at school. It was people who attended school or had some kind of function within the school, whether it be a bus rider, or a substitute teacher. That, that's how we accounted for this data. And as I did the totals for the month, you can see, I'm just going to run through them very quickly. In September, there was a total of two confirmed cases, zero in Sugar Camp, two in Three Lakes. In October, we had two in Sugar Camp, six in Three Lakes, for a total of eight. In November, we had zero in Sugar Camp, seven in Three Lakes, for a total of seven. And in December, we had three in each school, for a total of six. January, we had zero. February, zero in Sugar Camp, and two in Three Lakes, for a total of two. March, we had one in each school, for a total of two. April, we had one in Sugar Camp, two in Three Lakes, for a total of three. And in May, we had zero in either school. And that brings our grand totals for Sugar Camp, seven, and Three Lakes, twenty-three, and a total of thirty. The other piece of this that I wanted to bring out to you is, it definitely impacted everybody. This does not represent the hundred and thirteen close identifications, known close contacts. And thank the Lord, you know, it didn't necessarily turn into positives. We did not see that as a trend in school. And I am not the analytical statistician, but I will tell you this. I tried to keep real track, close track, as to see if there was trends, and we talked about that weekly with the county health department. What tended to be more of the situation that we could identify was if it was in a family case, and a parent or a close family member was positive, a close contact could become a positive. But it wasn't a school transmission. We did have a couple of times where we closed a fourth Lake K classroom for a few days. We closed a first grade classroom for four days, I think it was, in a kindergarten for three. We did it in the very beginning, have the junior high seventh grade, if you recall. We had that almost ten day period, because it was football-related, team-related, and the health department encouraged us to do that. But we didn't see a big uptick other than that. So I think our practices, you know, I'm speaking again as the novice, but doing the best we could. I think our practices did come through much more readily than many other districts who saw a lot more upticks, or, you know, or identifying, you know, in the tens and twenties of kids at a time, kids or staff. And so I think we, we did it well. I look forward to wrapping this up. I believe our intention, looking to fall, coming back to school, would be as the normal return to school. Of course, I cannot tell you then today, on June 16th, and then on August 16th. No, if something comes up, we will, we will bring that up. Our intentions are to have full onsite programming. Students and families who are desiring to do the true homeschool or pep experience will do the former protocols that we did in the past. And we're not going to be planning to have people going in and out. We're, we're really trying to focus on doing education onsite, or by the choice of the parent, but that's what they're sticking with, because that's what their protocols have been.
The, the board confirmed cases, that's not, is there, that isn't an actual case of COVID?
That is confirmed, actual.
Where somebody had tested positive?
Yes, by the health department, the health department confirmed.
So those are really thirty real ones?
These are, these are accurate, these are real. We, we could have people who were positive that we don't know. They were asymptomatic, or didn't get tested. I think the parents did a phenomenal job of if kids were sick, keeping them home, or getting them checked, because, I mean, a tribute to that is, we didn't see a big spread or outbreak, so. I guess not everyone, we were very fortunate.
Yeah. Due to a lot of work and a lot of people that watched over this, and did what they could to follow all the guidelines and such. Yeah, it's, when you see it all here, I guess my first impact is, you did good, so.
Well, and we were open, we kept open, and I, I don't mean to belabor the point, but it, it still just really troubles me that some kids have still not set foot into school. And I'm not talking about here, but in our own state, and as a nation, that's a lot more prevalent than people, I think, realize. And that the host of mental health and anxiety issues, besides the academic, the learning loss, the strain on parents. I talked to a couple of mental health counselors the past month. Just happened to know, actually, three different ones, and they again made the comment in, in different ways, and speaking that kids brought in the stress of the pandemic to school. And even if they, they appeared to do well, they felt their family's stress and struggles. And it's been even more difficult for those who have been removed or isolated, trying to come back in. So I do plan, in our coming back to school in the fall, to be very aware of that from the counseling standpoint, that some of our services might have to look a little bit different. Mrs. Margatane and Mr. Bach might be doing a little bit more. We, we were fortunate, because the majority of our kids were here, but we're going to have some kids who are trying to transition back, even, and, and are very positive by choice, but, you know, it's hard to get back in the groove. So we're going to be very aware of that. Do what we need to do, so everybody's feeling good and okay.
Okay. Yeah, okay, good.
So does this end the Blue Jay Return Plan?
I think it does, yes, because the school year, it was through the 30th of June, and, and our kids aren't here. I think that what I will be bringing to you is probably much more of like a one-pager, rather than the full document, as to what we will continue, what we will be monitoring, and, and how we will communicate when school begins, for the beginning of the year.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
You bet.
Next, we have consider the WIAA nine through twelve membership renewal for the 2021 through 2022 school year.
And this is in our documents to sign. Charlie Boe brought it to me just the other day. It is just our agreement that we, our senior high membership renewal, there's not cost, but every year we sign off on the sports that we are involved in through WIAA, and send that back into them. And it requires the board sig, or the board president's signature. Everything is exactly as we, not every year. Yep.
Looking for motion on that, approval?
I'll make a motion on it. Prove the WIAA membership renewal for 2021 and 2022 school year.
Okay.
Motion by Josh, seconded by Terry. Any other questions on it? Terry, none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to the personnel report, Terry?
Okay, for our personnel report update, we have three resignations. Randy Walker, our assistant cook. George Lurvy, our girls' basketball coach. And Mary Hansen, our part-time custodian.
All right, okay. Thank them for all their past services, and appreciation for all the things that they've done. Next, we go to the health insurance renewal update.
Okay, and I just wanted to give you the final update. After a lot of consideration, several meetings and negotiations, we did stay with the group health trust, WCA group health trust, that the same plan, the same benefits that we are currently involved in. Did a lot of looking at how we could be changing deductibles and such. We did get one bid from security that was, came in at a better rate. But I did my due diligence and talked to several other districts in our neighborhood, actually. Leon Olavino crammed in a few of those who had gone with them in the last couple of years. And I, the superintendents shared with me that they saw twenty-six to twenty-nine percent increases the following year, which really put my guard up. Discussing what a rough year it had been, seeing twelve retirements come through, realizing many boards have been rewarding their employees with stipends, or gift cards, or things like that. I, I don't believe that's how we take care of our employees. I think that they were very concerned about their insurance. I think that this is an appreciation, and it gets us through one more year, and we are building the education this year, that things are changing. I do think we have to start having the conversation that some of the deductibles, because we are a very low deductible district, may have to look a bit different. This district has some concern with past experience with an HSA, where it sounds like, and I'm just going on what I've been told from people here, didn't go real well, and I don't know how long ago that was. But I do think there's some benefits for us to be looking into, possibly setting up where we could be as a district, even looking at contributing partly to the HSA, and still saving in the long run. But even Cory Palmer, our representative, he said, it's a real volatile insurance industry this year, because people put off a lot of surgeries. Now it's starting up, things are really fluxing. It was, it was hard for us to get them to nail down on the rates at this point. So I got the confirmed seven point five percent. I went back four times, and that's where we ended up at. And I felt very good about that, because all around us, it was much higher. More like the twelve to eighteen percent. We did really well during the COVID year, that kept our rates pretty low, even though we had some higher claimants. But that's just kind of that little low in this year. And going to be very cognizant of looking at this, and I've already let Cory know that we'll want to be talking about insurance in January, February. We want to do this very early, because we also have looming, and I don't know if you followed this much, it's kind of out there, but it's not factual yet, that the state of Wisconsin is looking at an insurance program for schools, you know, kind of like a consortium type. That's out there, I don't know if it would be good, or if it was bad. If you have a lot of people involved, a lot of groups, you would think it might be better. But then you don't necessarily have the options that you're looking for. And we do have district members who are pretty reliant on the marsh field connection, and that's not offered by many of the other providers. So, like I said, you want to do the educational piece quite in advance, before you would get to make a major decision. People are leaving education in robes, and, and I can happily say that I believe the people leaving our district were leaving for the right reasons. Retirement, you know, years of service, it, it was time, but people were tired. And you don't want to take away some of the stability that keeps them coming to work and doing a really good job. So that's kind of in a nutshell, my report. I plan on, as I get all the documents brought together, we will have a presentation, a video presentation from our M3. I have talked to Cory, he's willing to bring that to you for the board to see. Or it can be just a video link I can share with you, and then the document, so you'll know exactly what employees are looking at and seeing in this.
Okay. Send us the link, that would be great.
You bet.
Yeah, I, I think the seven five in today's environment is.
I even tried for point five.
Well.
Fourth time, I said, point five, you know, a few thousand dollars in the district I have sides goes a long way. Didn't win that one.
Well, I mean, that's the only way you find out, right?
Right.
If you ask.
Absolutely.
It's negotiation, so. All right, well, well done, and thank you for the update on that. Very good. Anybody have any questions to that, board members?
Did any of the other school districts happen to say if their renewals came in more competitive?
No.
For those ones that had gone away to security and then.
Yeah, they came in, but not nearly as good as we did. The ones that were in the twenties, when they were looking to switch, they were still between twelve and fifteen. So they took a hit.
Sure.
Yeah. And that's the one benefit of the, the tight-knit group I have with the superintendents here. They're very comfortable with sharing.
Sure.
Their concerns.
All right. Okay, thank you. Moving on to district-related positive happenings.
I have one hot off the press. The boys won three zero, three one.
All right.
The text literally came in right at the end, and I'm like, gosh, this is going to be great timing. So I said at the meeting, I'm like, I can't wait to have a, I can have a district positive happening, I know it.
That is very positive.
All right, well done. Josh, you hit it about right on, you said forty-five minutes.
Run a game or two in my lap.
All right, so next up, for the boys.
Yeah, Tuesday, I'm not, I'm not sure they play the winner of Athens or.
Ah, they go to, I think they go to Rothschild for the sectionals, and it's a one-day, play two games if you win. So, which we have the better of the two, we get, we play a ten, maybe we play a ten in the morning, and then the other team will play, or the other pairing will play, and then the two winners will play the next game after that.
Okay. Excellent, good deal. All right, any others?
Well, we have, we have Track, the boys' Track team, so we're the champions. And then we have a whole slogan headed to sectionals for Track. So I think between the last meeting and here, like, it feels like two different worlds. We've had all the awards, the, all the awards programs for the elementary, Sugar Camp, Three Lakes, junior high, we did graduations since the last meeting, so that was a positive. Just trying to think what all happened. There's a lot, there's a lot in there at the last week.
Yeah, May is like the busiest month for you guys. And, yeah, I heard a lot of positive comments following graduation. Stood outside of graduation as everybody was coming through the doors, and, yeah. Everybody was real pleased, and how the event went, and, yeah, congratulations to the class again.
I wonder if you heard Terry started, you tell them about, she asked me like the day after, she's like, I, that just, it flowed so well, and I like how you guys had it set up. And I said, well, that's how it is every year, but she'd only seen the COVID version in July of twenty, March 2019, so she didn't know that that was normal. She's like, you guys did a great job. This is normal. Normal is really nice.
Normal is good, right? Yeah, you come to appreciate that, don't you?
We do.
Oh, it has some great pictures in the paper, too.
Yeah, it's nice, yeah. Well done. All right, anything from correspondence at all?
I just received the resolutions packet from WASB this week. I have not had an opportunity to read them, I will read up on them. And then I'm already thinking about what we might want to be talking about for a resolution from our district.
It's always nice to have one.
Yeah.
It's out or winter, I should say.
Yeah, and a couple things, I'm thinking about that.
And since I'm still, I'm going to keep myself on that board, that always doesn't hurt.
Yeah, very good. All right, and then we go to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen twenty-five, one C, to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. A to consider staffing levels, individual staff contracts, hiring of staff, annual resignation slash retirement staff. I'll take a little poll vote. Stacy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, and thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a nice night, guys.